Well, we have the eight in my house.
The meeting started. I wanted to start the meeting by introducing Erica Uriarty. She's our new town planner. I want to give her just a few seconds to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Erica Uriarty. I'm the new town planner. My background's actually in civil engineering and environmental permitting. So for the last seven years, I worked for an environmental consulting firm in Walton called ESS Group. There, I was involved with all stages of land development from concept to design permitting to construction oversight. So I'm hoping this will be a good fit and I can do a good job, so.
Welcome.
Welcome, Lori.
Are you an issue to the Uriartys from Walton?
I am not, no. That's my married name and they're from a different area, so.
So we have attorney Alan Chalkett here for Century Mill Estates who will come forward. So.
You joining me? No. Yeah, I'm gonna need you. Well, you call me, alright.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Just going down. Okay. First thing to address would be the modification to the special permit we got in the open space conveyance. Just for recollection purposes. This is the most recent plan showing how OS2, the open space area, has been modified in accordance with the wishes of the Conservation Commission. And essentially what was done was to take the existing Zone 1 parcel and make that one parcel and make the access, the Zone 1 access parcel which runs from Sider Circle to the Zone 1 also into a separate parcel so that those pieces can be owned, conveyed and owned by the homeowners association instead of by the town as originally planned. So as a result, instead of deeding 100 acres to the town or whatever entity the town's going to hold it in, the grant would be approximately 90 acres because the open space, the Zone 1 and the road take up about nine acres of land, about 9.2 acres of land to be exact. So the special permit provision, what is it? In provision 1, it specifies that 100 acres will be granted and that isn't going to be possible. So we're here to try to get that amended accordingly. And this is to make the Conservation Commission comfortable. This is not our. So that's the. So Zone 1 is the access road and? Yes. The well? Both pieces are going to be, instead of owned by the town, they'll be owned by the association with an access, with easement granted to the town. That's one piece. It's, well, it's two pieces. It's actually two separate parcels. Is it access, is that, that's Zone 1 and then this is Zone 2? No, 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 they're all, this is, this is Zone 1 parcel and this is the access. Just the Zone 1 access parcel, but just separately labeled. So it'll be separately deeded when the deeds are done, hopefully this part. So that's the request. So we signed this one last time. And how is what we're doing tonight different? We're not doing anything different. All we're doing is on the special permit, that was recorded way back when, this language that says that the applicant shall deed at least 100 acres of open space within the property to the town of Bolton. And we just want to get that modified to reflect the, what's really going on here. Is that we're actually going to be deeding around 90 acres to the town of Bolton with the other 10 acres owned by the homeowners association instead of the town. And do you have wording for them? I can, I don't, I'll come up with something, yes.
Because are you looking to put this, are you looking to file this or what are you looking for?
Yeah, I mean, I would expect that we would need to record an amendment to the approval.
Yeah.
I think the question before the board, is it a minor modification that requires just a signature? Or is it a major that requires a hearing?
No, no, I mean, I mean, my opinion is we've been down this road several times. We've agreed to it, there's no issue here. You want to get it recorded so that it's official, that's fine. 90 acres goes to the town, 10 acres is still open space and a homeowners association, so it's a total of 100 acres.
And it's also to the conservation restriction anyway. It encompasses the entire.
But whatever you want to record as our decision, I mean, we need to have specific language. So maybe you want to draw that up.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So just, just for me, where is the 90 acres and where is the 10? The 90 acres, it comprises all the open space areas in the subdivision, the bulk of which is in the so-called OS2 piece. There are approximately 90 acres, actually 80 acres in OS2. Actually listed here on the plan. There's 81 acres in the remaining OS2 area. See, the listing here, it's on the plan. And then there's another nine acres in the other OS2 areas that will be conveyed to the town when, when the time, Judy can figure it out with the state. Town council can figure it out with the state. So we just want to have the special permit reflect what's really going on. So when he's going to come up with language, are we going to, we're going to have a motion now?
Yeah, I think we should, I would make a motion that we vote to approve the modification to the special permit. First of all, that this is, we vote that this is a minor modification. Second of all, that we vote to approve the modification of the special permit to change the language from 100 acres deeded to the town to 90 acres deeded to the town and 10 acres kept in open space as part of the homeowners association for the Zone 1 radius. And you can come up with specific language, but that's the gist.
All I'm going to do is just, yes, I will take care of that.
But I.
Language before it's, before it's recorded?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and you should show us a map that shows the 90 and the 10.
Show you a map of the 90 and the 10. Okay, well, I can come up with something.
Yeah, I mean, that shouldn't be that hard.
No, actually, all it's going to be is the same open space.
Right, with that's 10. But I think we should have, part of that language should be a map of what's happening.
Second to that motion.
So the first motion is to vote that this is a minor modification.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any against?
I'm not stating because I missed most of the discussion.
The second motion would be to accept, to acknowledge and agree to the gist of the argument or the discussion here that there's, there's a change to the special permit where the language previously said 100 acres deeded to the town. It will now be changed to 90 acres deeded to the town and an additional 10 acres of open space in the conservation restriction deeded to a homeowners association. And I think we can vote on that specific concept. And you can give us more specific language if you want to.
Yes, I'll look at it and re-vote later at any time.
But I'd like to see the map showing it too.
Sure. Obviously, there's no change in any of the, the only change is going to be this.
I just think there should be one map that shows, here's the, you know, the whole thing with the 10 as a different color or something like that.
So we could just vote on that when it comes in. Great. Do you have a vote for that?
Well, I guess we're going to vote when you give us this specific language.
That's fine.
We're agreeing that that's what we're doing.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Next, Phase 4 of the project. It's, the road is being built out, it's likely to build it up, Road C moving into the next phase. And according to the permit, we needed to come before you and obtain your permission to do that. In conjunction with obtaining that permission, we're also working with Conservation to get their permission to move forward on Road C. That'll hopefully be Tuesday night. So do you have a plan for that?
The plan is the subdivision.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the 68, the 64 piece.
Road C.
Do you want me to grab the subdivision plans? They're sitting in the tunnel.
Is the next phase the rest of the project or?
No, it's, it's Road C.
Road C.
So the southern piece going on.
It's the first right as you enter the project from the current entrance. The first right is called Roadstone Circle or Road C. It's Roadstone Circle now, but. And the first 450 feet of that road is Phase 2, which is part of the current phase. And that was paved last week. The remaining 1,450 feet of the road we just paved is Phase 4.
And that was the way it was, the language when we came up with the phasing, that was Phase 4?
Yes. Yep. We started in Phase 2.
So it's basically from the middle, the main road from approximately the middle of the subdivision onto Century Mill?
Yes.
I would also just like the board to know Carol Gumberg from the Conservation Commission wrote a memorandum and the second paragraph talks about this issue and the wetland crossing. That's part of that.
Second pair of the memorandum. We had a sit walk with them and they had asked for some additional information that we're providing so that we can get the permission to move forward. So. The plan was that you were going to do this work between July and October of 2014 and you're moving it up to? We're trying to move it up. To the winter. Yep.
Yeah, not all of the work, it's just, there's a, there's a wetland crossing that probably is 150 feet, let's say, plus or minus of the road. It involves a crossing of a wetland. That section of the road was supposed to be dug when it was dry, which is typically in the summertime, but generally, right now, we're in drought. And so the water table is down very low and.
So it's a good time to get it.
Yeah, I do, Shawn Mendelius says, guys at the CONCON at the sit walk, that it's a very good time to do the work at the crossing. So the July, just to, the June, the June, the summer time period is not for the entire road. It's just for the.
For the crossing, the wetland.
Other than that, is, any, there is no recommended time to build a road.
Okay, so we have the town engineer saying he doesn't see a problem with that. He doesn't see a technical reason to prohibit, you know, the construction of Old Stone Circle. And then you're meeting with Conservation Commission, when? Tuesday night. Tuesday night, next Tuesday.
Does Fred say anything in there about talking to the fire chief? About the cistern?
No, what is the cistern issue?
Did you talk to Chief Menson yet?
Well, I heard about, I heard that this, I heard a question making me come up tonight about the, about fire issues in general. The subdivision plan was reviewed by the fire department at the time it was designed. Road C has a cistern on it as does the current road that's already built. So as we build that road, the cistern that the fire department recommended, which is shown on the subdivision plans that we built, in accordance with the plan. So it should be.
So these cisterns are for fire prevention?
Right, they're shown on the plans and we already, you know, they're showing it precisely where they're supposed to be, how they're supposed to be built. We've already built one and.
What is the fire chief's concern?
Just that he'd be involved in it as they move forward and before they start running anything. So most important thing is before the quote unquote sticks go up, is that? The phrases, that's what they're saying. So just to check with him.
The current, all of the current roads that are in, are in Phase 2, which has a cistern. The only road that's not in Phase 2 is at the end of the cul-de-sac which was put in about a year and a half ago. And that's only 150 feet long. It's at the end of Sider Circle, which was, used to be called Road B. But that has, that also has a cistern in it. The next cistern is located after the crossing. And we're discussing with the planning board on Road C, pretty close, right after the crossing. So that would go in.
So we have, the process that we have ongoing with this development is regular on-site meetings with the town engineer and the town planner, I believe in the past. And as new construction begins, I would assume that would be more, you know, I don't know if you've been meeting, how often you've been meeting. I know when, when the activity was heavy on the other part of it, they were weekly meetings. So we want to follow the same process that we followed then and also, you know, bring in other people such as the fire chief at the appropriate time when we're working on things that relate to their services. So if you're working on the cistern, we'd want him to be involved with it.
He was when we built it.
Obviously, the town BPW chief as well, or whatever he'd like to be involved with. The same holds true process-wise for the bonding of the road and any release of lots. When you get to that point, you know, we'll need to have an estimate of the, you know, remaining work to be done and the value of the work and follow the exact same process that we followed previously.
As we've been doing.
I would assume that we have the same rules in place in terms of the working time and, you know, the starting time each day and that type of thing so that we don't have any issues with now as we're starting to get over to Century Mill, people who live over there. I know you're already over there, so.
Yep.
So I guess our request is to allow for the beginning of construction on Phase 4. Obviously conditioned upon getting approval from CONCON.
Well, CONCON has jurisdiction.
Well, all of the, all of the.
Over that section.
Over the wetland crossing.
Right.
Which is the next step.
So I don't, you know, I don't see a reason why that wouldn't be fine.
So we have a motion?
Motion to approve adding Phase 4 to the current construction of the subdivision. Subject to all the rules and guidelines that we've had in place previously for this, for the development process.
Paul Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Thank you. Next, okay. In the special permit, there was a provision, our provision 6, upon the approval of the amendment to the definitive plan for the installation of the base code installed in the subdivision roadways, the applicant shall donate. Aye, read one. Three lots within the subdivision, which lots shall be selected by the applicant for an amount equal to the appraised value of the selected lots without roadway improvements to the Bolton Affordable Housing Partnership or its designated. So it's, we're getting there gradually. So we wanted to begin a discussion on this issue of determining a value. I, any event that my client would want to simply make a donation to the town and get that going.
Okay. I think the permit states that one lot is supposed to be donated upon the 20th occupancy permit. And then another lot on the 40th occupancy permit and another lot on the 60th. So at this point, I guess we can work on one or three or however we want to do it. But what the permit says is on the 20th, I think, I think what it says is one.
Where are you on that?
Probably, we're not near it, but we're not that close.
There aren't about six.
But as we, you know, as there are houses, in another six months, we could be up around 15 or 18 or 20. So it's just a beginning.
So I think that, you know, I can't speak for the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm one member of it, of six, including the three selectmen. But I do know that we had another situation with a, with a lot in a development and, you know, it's, we're not in any position to develop house lots or anything like that. Ultimately, we're going to, you know, try to, try to sell it anyway. So, you know, if, if the desire is to just, you know, come up with a fair market value and make that contribution, I think that's probably, it would have to be a vote yet by that board, which would not be this board. It would be the three selectmen and the three members of the Affordable Housing Trust. And I think that you would find that, you know, the concept of making a donation rather than actually transferring a lot would be okay. It'd just be a matter of coming up with a fair market value based on, you know, probably a couple of appraisals, you know, at that time. So it's probably premature to do an appraisal because until you get to that time, you know, it could be a year from now, it could be six months from now, so.
We, I guess we would like to try to do it. The donation, I'm sure it probably says honor before the 20th.
Yeah, if you want to do it before that, that's fine.
I thought, I mean, we, you know, we've sold a number of undeveloped lots between $140,000 and $150,000 per lot. I think we originally sold around 20 odd at that number at $140,000 and then probably two weeks ago, we sold 25 at $150,000 with no road. So that's what we're selling for. We'd like to, I think, get sort of closure on it and just get it over with.
Well, I think the value of the lots is going to go up as you near completion. So I don't think there's any advantage, you know, to settling all three right at once.
Well, we're supposed to do one out of, on the first 20. And what we already have paved is 20 lots. So we're sort of at the point, I think, where it needs to be done.
So I would, I would suggest, and I'm, I'm open to that. I would suggest that what you need to do is we need to get on the selectmen's.
I just want to know what the process is.
Well, you would need, you know, there would need to be, we'd have to be on the agenda for a meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. It would be a regular selectman meeting with the members, the other members of the trust. So they would have, need to be notified ahead of time. So, I mean, you can do that in any two-week period, they meet every two weeks.
So we should go to the, we should get on the agenda.
But the Affordable Housing Trust votes on whether to get land or money. But is the planning board would vote on whether.
Do you have a certificate now or to wait?
Well, 20, 20 certificate of occupancy, 40, 60, you know, whether to do that all at once or whether to do it as it's described.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. That's probably, that's probably true that it's ultimately a planning board decision as it relates to the special permit or, you know, the, you know, what was granted by the planning board. So if you want to, you know, maybe put in writing what you're proposing to do.
To the affordable?
Well, to Jonathan's point, the first, the first, you know, you have a decision by the planning board that says you need to do something and.
So it should come here.
I guess, I guess it should come here first. But it can be shared with the, with the trust at the same time that this is what you're proposing. You know, I would think you'd need to get buy-in of those two groups.
I just want to get the.
We get the process started.
Ball rolling, so to speak.
These sales of lots that you've made are bulk sales to developers with the road not in? That's the idea?
Both. Both. Some, some, one person bought one, one person bought six, one person bought 10. But they're, those were the prices we sold them.
Okay. An issue came up, what's the next item, with regard to the driveways in the Bolton driveway bylaw?
Which is why I helped Brown this year tonight.
Right, so.
I will differ. There's a bylaw in Bolton which I have never read, but my understanding is it requires a bit of a depression, so to speak, so that when water comes down the driveway prior to hitting the road, it runs onto the lot before it hits the road. My understanding is, and we've been constructing our driveways that way. However, our subdivision has drainage, underground drainage. And the purpose of, I believe, the purpose of the bylaw really has to do with driveways that drain onto roads that don't have underground drainage as our subdivision does. Our subdivision for Century Mill Estates was designed, the drainage system is actually designed and the calculations for the drainage system were designed to include the runoff from the lots, including the driveways. So when I contacted GCG, which is the design engineer of the subdivision plans, they wrote a letter which has been submitted to the planning board confirming that the design calculations for the drainage include runoff from the lots and the driveways. And in fact, their letter really goes a step further to say that that they recommend that the design, that the construction be done in accordance with the design, not preventing every driveway from draining and not preventing every lot from draining onto the road because it was designed not, you know, wasn't designed that way. So we're sort of here just to, because the bylaw really, I don't think, was intended for subdivision with underground drainage. So that's fine with you.
You've handled the bylaw. Politically, we have to stand by the bylaw. If you agree with Andy that the development was designed so as not to drain, that was designed in support of the drain on the road. I must remind you, we're, 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 we're outside today and have a road that does, a driveway does go on a road. You guys, and they've got a problem. Now, if you see this driveway is designed and no, and water's not flowing onto the road and staying on the side and going to the drainage system, then the only thing, and if you agree with all of that, then the only thing, I don't think the planning board has the jurisdiction to override the bylaw. I believe only Zoning Board of Appeals would have that. Your avenue then would be the planning board then votes to ask the plant, writes a letter or to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Andy goes to Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe that.
Do you have it, Chuck? Alan, I didn't see anything about the depression.
No, there's nothing about the depression.
Discharge onto the road.
Discharge onto road. It's just, how you accomplish it is immaterium. It's just, how you accomplish it is immaterium.
Okay, so, two, well, we have the old one. So two dot four dot one dot one driveway is section C. No person shall construct or maintain any driveway conduit or drains with the discharge of water or filth upon the street pavement or to open waterways or ponds. And D, no driveway shall be constructed which ties directly onto an accepted townway which in any manner inhibits the existing drainage system of the townway. And that's pretty much all I saw with single driveways, I mean, shared driveways or common driveways, rather. You know, it basically says the same thing, but, you know, totally differently.
Yeah, it doesn't say subdivisions are exempt, so, you're right, Harold, I agree with you. The bylaw applies to all driveways in town. So what it doesn't apply to is private land. So, you know, if you want to construct your subdivision in a way that won't meet our bylaws, then, you know, we'd be inclined to not accept the road when the time came, because we would say, this hasn't been built the way we want it built. We can't force you to do it, because it's, we don't, it's not a road yet. But I agree that we don't want water discharged from driveways onto the road. If there's, you know, a drainage swale right at the base of the driveway that carries it away, so it never gets onto the road.
That's the point, it's never doing it. The difference, though, here is that the, I think the bylaw is written for driveways and roads that don't have drainage, like underground drainage.
I don't think it's really about flooding, it's more about ice. So, you know, your, your engineer is kind of talking about a hundred-year flood. It's really conditions like we've had in the last week, where you have little bits of rain and you get black ice, and, you know, the danger that creates at the foot of the driveway and the road.
I don't think so. I don't think.
The water can't drain fast enough to, you know, not freeze on the surface, that's the issue.
What happens to the drainage on the road? Normally. But I really don't think you're correct.
Well, you've been doing it one way, why do you want to change, like, one-third into the project?
Because, actually, the subdivision itself, the design of it, is calculated to include the lots and the driveway. So what the engineer wrote to the planning board was, it's supposed to work that way. If we prohibit the drainage from the lots going onto the road, the design will not function as it was intended. It's actually supposed to work that way.
I, I don't think it says that, and I'm gonna make a motion that we vote right now on this issue, so we don't have to debate it any further, that we make a.
You understand that the DPW does not have a problem with what I'm asking?
I, I, no, that's not quite true. I said, I, what I said was.
Is it would have to go before?
It has to go before the planning board, and it's the planning board's decision on this. And then if you, if the planning board agreed with you, you would then have to go to ZBA if they saw. But if the planning board does not agree with you, then, then they vote to maintain the bylaw.
The subdivision was, though, you agree, designed for the driveway drainage being on to the road.
Yes, but necessarily, that doesn't meet our bylaw.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay, and the bylaw's purpose was for the northeast and our freezing. I don't doubt that your drainage can handle it, your drainage system can handle it. I do say that the drainage system doesn't need that extra flow, and if the planning board agrees with the bylaw, then the bylaw stands, and the road, the driveways have to be constructed so as not to drain on the road.
The, the water that hits the road when it rains goes into the gutter, because that's the way the road is designed.
Okay, Noah, we may have a full evening tonight, we're just, the board's going to.
So.
I mean, that's how it's designed.
Just to be clear, if there's no water from the driveway going out onto the road, if it's stopping at the edge of the road and going into a drain on the edge of the road.
Drainage system will not function as well as designed.
Then I, then I don't think it's going onto the road, okay? So you can on a case-by-case driveway make that argument, but I'm sure you're gonna run into one or two that are really steep, and they're gonna dump onto the road, and you're gonna have to do something beyond that.
Okay, but you, you have the letter from the engineer that says the drainage system will function better if you allow it to function the way it's designed.
You're reading, you're reading words that I don't see. I do see that it says that it was, you know, it was designed with that in, taken into account, it's designed to handle that load. I don't see where it says it won't work properly if you don't allow us to dump water from the driveways onto the road. That is very illogical to me, and I don't see where it says it.
Okay, I'll read it, if you don't mind.
I do mind, we gotta move on to the next thing.
I can't read it into the record?
Yeah.
All right, I'll just read it in. If you don't want me to, I won't, but the letter's right here, it says. It says that the drainage was designed for the driveways to drain onto the street if necessary and flow to the closest catch basin. We would recommend that the development be constructed in accordance with general conformance of the design to ensure that the drainage system works as designed. I think he is saying exactly what I'm saying. That's the way it was designed, and he's saying, don't change it. But if you want to change it, that's what you vote.
Okay, that's enough. Is there a motion in support of Bolton's existing bylaw?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the bylaw is clear that, that we don't want water discharged from driveways onto the roadways, and it applies to all driveways, it doesn't make any exceptions for subdivisions, so I would just, I, I would suggest that I agree with what the DPW chief has said, that it's a bylaw that exists for all driveways, and we don't really have the ability to waive it, it's not a rule, it's a bylaw.
I'll second. Could we table it, Tony, till we have an opportunity to review this with our engineers? Can we take it off the table for the meantime?
Sure.
Appreciate that.
I'd just say, next time you come in, please come in with plans that related to each topic item. You know, I'd really like to know what driveways you're talking about, you know, there's a whole, as well as on a number of other items here, just like to have the plan here, you can't just expect, you know, the town planner to have that available. It certainly helps us understand what you're asking for, but, thank you.
As I say, if you can table that, I'd appreciate it.
So, what about the permit extension?
Yeah, last item would be, our permits, special permit expires, we believe, you know, in June of two thousand fifteen, the subdivision approval expires in November of two thousand fifteen, and we wanted to, we certainly don't want to wait to the last minute, we're, this, we're not, I don't think it'll be done by that time, it's only a year and a half away, so with all lots to be built, so we wanted to begin the discussion and move forward to try to have these things extended, so we'll have the appropriate time to get this done. So those are the dates, June of two thousand fifteen for the special permit, and November of two thousand fifteen for the subdivision approval.
That's what you're asking to extend it to?
No, that's what it's extended to right now, based on the, the Permit Extension Act for the Commonwealth.
So what do you want it extended to?
It's the appropriate, it's another two years on each would seem to be.
Will it be done in two thousand seventeen?
Probably not, I would probably do.
I don't know, it's, it's take, it's. But I think that's the right way to do it.
I don't think we should do more than two years at a time.
Yeah.
Go with it. Yeah, so two, it seems like two years seems to be the appropriate times that we've been dealing with on, with the conservation commission in here. So that would be the request to get some extensions done well before we get close, because.
The most recent one's in your packets. So, Alan.
Yeah.
Let's go over the permit.
Of course. The, the special permit.
Boss, your special permit was filed with town clerk in July, that's two thousand five, June twenty-seven, two thousand seven, the board did cause vote to extend special permit pursuant to a special law for a section nine, two additional years, so that brings you from seven to nine.
Right, and then we have one that is nine.
Of course, the extension was filed, right? And then filed, and then whereas the board extends it again, in the second paragraph, brings you to two thousand and eleven.
Right.
Two years will bring you to two thousand and thirteen.
No, no, we, the, but, under the.
Permit Extension Act.
Permit Extension Act, that takes us to two thousand fifteen. The four years.
So you're asking four years.
No, 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 we, the permit, under the Permit Extension Act, my review, Mike's review, was that the, the June two thousand eleven becomes June two thousand fifteen, under the, under the Commonwealth's Permit Extension Act.
For the four years.
For the four years.
Okay.
So what we're looking to do is essentially take this to two thousand seventeen, to extend that up for another two years.
Well, why don't you submit that to us in writing for the next time?
Okay. That we can do. And, so as I say, you have this, you have the Permit Extension Act that was extended for another two years.
Yeah, it was initially two years and then.
And then it became four years, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that would be, so I'll, I'll do that for next time, that's fine. And the subdivision approval, as I mentioned, expires in November of two thousand fifteen, which is eight years beyond the original approval, which was the endorsement date of November of two thousand seven. So I would be asking for two years on that also, to take us to November two thousand seventeen.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have Greg Roy.
How are you?
Hold up the chair, sir.
How are you?
I'm not sure strategically it'd be, I should have said.
So, you want to make your request?
Sure. My name's Greg Roy with Ducharme and Dillis, and I'm here with Bob Kylie with Highfield and Trust. And we're here, I'll try not to take a lot of your time on any of that back agenda. We're here to request a reduction in the amount of the stipulated, in the original tri-party agreement. Back in two thousand and ten, when the tri-party agreement was, was first initial, initialized or executed, we prepared a cost estimate for the development based on the work that had not been done, which was, after contingencies and, and factors were added, the, well, the cost, the cost estimate at the time was, was about six hundred thousand dollars. The tri-party agreement was then set based on the work that was left outstanding at the time, it was then set at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on an estimate that we revised at the time of the tri-party agreement. In the last three years, we've completed a number of other items, such as, you know, finishing up paving activities, installing culverts, doing a bunch of restoration, completing a lot of the drainage features for the development, installing electrical conduits, and actually powering the subdivision. So it's quite a bit of work that's been done, so we're, we made a request to you, which has been reviewed by your review consultant Fred Hamway, to reduce that amount, the amount of the remaining work from, or down to one hundred and forty, almost one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that's our request this evening. So my client's desire is to reduce that amount in the tri-party agreement, and I believe that that procedure needs to start with your board approving that, that request, so that you can take that decision to the bank, and that.
From five, huh?
Well, the, you, you have that, sort of, you, you have that as a mortgage, but the amount of the, of work is, is the, is the focus.
So Fred's saying one forty, you know, rounding up one forty-five plus ten percent?
Correct.
I actually have a question about that. When we get into the spreadsheet here, the bottom line, the sub total is one thirty-one five ninety, contingency thirteen one fifty-nine, which is ten percent. Is that the ten percent, or is this ten percent?
I think you add another ten.
Okay.
I think that's just a, the sort of construction contingency, you know, in the part.
I'm not sure what was meant by contingency, since they were both ten percent.
Yeah.
I wanted to be clear about that.
There's a lot of factors at stake that are added on to it, so I think your board adds another factor on to that, which might even be, I'm not exactly sure what that percentage is.
To fifty or a hundred, I can't remember.
I think it's fifty, yeah.
Government.
Yeah. Yeah, well, here is a, it's in the tri-party, it says, I don't know if we have the copy of the tri-party. On the second page, number six, you can see on December sixth, two thousand and ten.
One point five multiplier.
Yeah. Multiply, well, it says one point five percent, but I believe it's one point five times.
It is a fifty percent multiplier.
Fifty percent multiplier.
Yeah, so if the number's one hundred and forty-four, then we ask you to do it to one hundred and forty-four plus seventy-two.
Yeah, which I, I think would, yeah, I think would be nominally two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then.
So what, what, it looks like, I know I've been by there several times, you know, obviously, all the, the bridge and the wetlands crossing and all that work is done, the first coat is in, is, the, the whole road is done for the first coat.
It's basically top coat, guardrail, bounds, asphalt, and some trees.
Okay. And a few miscellaneous culverts created, the culverts under the driveways and things haven't been installed, so we didn't ask for those.
Okay. And on this project, how are you working with the conservation commission?
We have an open order conditions for both the road construction, which had a crossing, wetland crossing, and a wetland replication. The bulk of that work is completed, but we have, there's a few things that remain in the buffer zones, we haven't asked for a stipulated compliance yet. And then we have a, and there's ongoing monitoring that we're doing for them as part of that road order conditions. And then there are four lots that have individual orders of conditions, so when they go to, when we go to build those houses, one of them is lot four, which, which has been built, I believe, five, six, and seven are the other ones, I can't really remember.
Oh, three and four. Two are, one is.
Maybe it's three, five, and six, then.
Oh, the orders, conditions?
Right. When the houses are built, we have orders of conditions that cover just that work. So we have actually five open orders of conditions on the, on the project.
So is, is the tree planting just a roadside planting, or is it related to the wetlands?
No, the replication area's been done.
Okay.
Yeah, there's replication area, and then there are, the plantings that Bob's referred to, there are street trees that we need to install as part of the approved subdivision plans that have not yet been installed, that, that's still remaining in the cost estimate as an open item. And there are also some, some additional trees that we agreed to in mitigation across the street from the subdivision entrance, that you actually may have a letter on that we're, we're trying to work with that a butter.
So that, the butter on the corner.
Yes.
It doesn't want the lights coming off.
The board hasn't seen that letter yet, because.
Oh, yeah.
You haven't, you haven't received the, the letter from the, from the butter.
It's a long lifetime, really.
But you have been talking directly to them to work on that.
I've been email, not emailed, regular snail mail, so.
And is that in this budget, or is that?
That's still an open item as well, yeah.
On Sugar Road proper, on the front of the property, when you come off a goal to run, it's a curve, and then the curb, I believe as part of the decision, we agreed to shave the curb back a little bit.
That has to be done.
That's still open as well.
Okay, so making sure it's still on.
Yeah, it is, it's on the radar, it's just finding the appropriate time to.
Yeah, this is not a good time.
In all, in all candor, it blew it last summer, because you, you were replacing a culvert under Sugar Road.
That's right.
And I just couldn't pull myself together to get, you know, get. And I just couldn't pull myself together to get, you know, get somebody over there with a machine to just try and, you know, hydraulic hammer it down, so that was a missed opportunity, I guess you could say, for sure.
I'll just be happy to see it someday.
Yeah.
We got to walk down the road that way.
It's pretty exciting, because I walk down that way now and then.
I'd be careful.
Yeah, well, I am, yeah.
So, all the, all those items, um, that we mentioned are still open as well, as a few other items just haven't been completed, that'll be more, um, red before it flows out, will be finished.
When you say they're open, they're within the scope or they're outside?
They're still open, as in, we're not, we're not asking for you to release that work, because we're still, have yet to complete it, it's still, it'll still remain, I don't know, on the cost estimate. And you'll still be covered in the tri-party, the bank will still hold that money, just in case it needs to be completed.
Now, what did our agreement say about the lot that you were donating?
I think it's kind of open-ended, but it's something that, uh, we should really start getting, um, we should, we should really start to move on that. So, the discussion that occurred prior to me sitting here was fairly helpful. Now, I'm still not crystal clear whether, does one come here first, or the, you know, selectmen, et cetera?
Well, if you're going to do it the way it's in the order, then you just go to the Affordable Housing Trust, but if you want to change something in the order, the subdivision order, then you would come to us. So, that's the question. In, in the decision, did it specifically say a time that you had to make the donation by, was it by-
I don't think so.
Because we did in that other one say by a certain number of occupancy permits.
I think it was really open-ended. I, I can't even recall in all candor.
Okay, well, we should check that.
Yeah, why don't you guys take a look at it, too?
Because we usually do put something in there, by such and such a day. And, and by such and such a date doesn't mean that it can't be done before that.
Yeah.
But, but let's see what the language is.
Yeah. If my intention would be to make the donation, that we had talked about, you know, the potential for context, et cetera, and, I know Habitat for Humanity, just didn't work out so well, so.
Yeah, it just didn't.
That's too bad.
It seems like a good neighborhood tour. Seems like it would work in your neighborhood. Boy, you should have been at those meetings. It didn't seem to work in that neighborhood. I was in a few of the meetings with many of the neighbors.
Oh, really?
Well, they were against a duplex. You know, we were talking about doing a duplex unit, to try and, obviously, yeah, to get more bankback out of the, uh, you know, and it certainly could be done there easily.
Yeah.
And we even looked at, you know, whether or not we could, you know, do two, two bedroom- They'd be the same scale as the house this year building. Yeah, and that was the idea, make it look like, have a drive-around, you know, do it, but, but the, the argument was loud and clear among people who lived near there, and David Lindsay was involved with this as a selectman, and, and, you know, he certainly heard it too, that, that they felt like allowing a duplex would change everything in their neighborhood, change the value of their property, and it was not what's allowed in Bolton, and it wouldn't be fair or right to do it in that particular neighborhood. And unfortunately, I've heard that before, under this, in other, in a different neighborhood in Bolton, under the same circumstances, where we were looking at, trying to do a duplex for an affordable housing unit, so as a result of that, I came to the conclusion that that's going to be a difficult thing to sell in Bolton, and we'd be better off taking the money and trying to use it elsewhere. Yeah. There are two nice, two nice, uh, units, I guess it's four units, but two houses in Stowe on 117. So it's not a driveway on each side of the house, it's kind of a shared driveway, but it looks like it's a single-family house. You have to be really looked to pick up. And the scale is the same as kind of the, you know, the medium-sized houses that are being built in Bolton.
If you're trying to build an affordable three-bedroom house, it's, you know, it's not going to be pretty.
Well, especially in Bolton where you have a septic system and a well.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a-
It's a high development, side development.
Yeah, it's, uh, so, you know, it could possibly work with two units, but with a single, it's hard to fathom.
It's a lot of cash coming in.
Need to do something.
But not build a duplex.
No, we need to pass a, a neighborhood overlay bylaw that allows for it in a certain area, and then it would be a town bylaw, and it wouldn't be, you know, forcing it on a neighborhood that didn't think it was fair to them. I mean, that's, that's what I've come around to, that, you know, it makes more sense to do it in a, in a zoning overlay somewhere.
Groton's doing a little bit of that now. There's a couple of projects there, that the density's been really popped up quite a bit, but this sewer in Groton Center.
Makes, makes a big help.
The historic, well, I should stop talking, you have more to do, so.
So, uh, I, I would make a motion that we vote to accept the reduction in the tri-party agreement, based on our engineer's assessment, we have the final number on this spreadsheet, multiplied by 1.5 or 150%. subject to, you know, future reductions when you do more work, and you come back to us. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any guests? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
We'll look for, we'll look at the approvals.
Yeah.
Do you think I should be coming here first, or, I'm still not really sure. I mean, we need to-
I think you need to get this, this board needs to tell you to go see the other board, so yes, that's what you need to come here. But it could be pretty simple and straightforward.
Yeah.
Pretty simple and straightforward. And then you will also need an appraised value, you know, to back up whatever the number is.
Can I source the original reason?
No, I think it needs to be an independent appraisal.
How many fingers engaging that? So this was the original value?
He, he, give me a good note.
What is the original value? Do you want a letter? Like, it's in the bank? What is it? It doesn't matter.
Uh, so next, we have Walter Erickson with comments.
Good evening. We were a few months ago to finalize a bond for the common driveway improvements on Long Hill Road. And your engineer Fred Hamway recommended 29,000, I think 400 dollars, and when a half-time came to 43,000 dollars. He finally closed and purchased the lot last month, and we'd like to get our building permit. So, we, uh, we have here, uh, a tri-party agreement from our bank, and the area above the letter of credit, for the 43,000 dollars. And I have the original here, executed by the bank, that we would like to present to the board for acceptance, so that we could pay our building permit.
So, uh, did you say something about the town engineer, considering this?
Mr. Hamway approved that, and this was actually his, that Exhibit A was actually his, well, actually, uh, bond was originally prepared by Ducharme and Dillis, and went to Mr. Hamway, and he revised the figures. So this is his, these are his figures, the 29,000 dollars, that's in this exhibit.
And this is from July 29, 13?
Yes.
Or revised 8, 12, 13?
Yes. And I think we came into the board in September to have the figure finalized, and then we just closed on the lot last month. So, we won't actually be starting any work on the common driveway to conditions.
Well, this looks pretty straightforward. So modified, did you, um, record that modified plan?
We didn't already record it yet, but we will, we're recording it with, uh, with everything.
Okay, because we would, we would need that recorded, so that we can reference it, you know, an actual recorded document, which is, I assume that's what you'll call it when you record it.
Right.
So, then we'll hold off on this until we- Well, we voted on that, that driveway, and you have our signature on it, right?
Yes.
So I think we can vote on it, subject to the recording of the document.
We'll record it in, record it right away. But when I can get the, uh, the plan book reference-
They'll record it tomorrow. I definitely want to record it.
And I can get the plan book reference over to the town planner. Add it on.
Yeah, I think that'll work. Any other questions, comments? So we have a motion.
I'm making a motion to accept this tri-party agreement, subject to getting it recorded and getting the book number two.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any guests?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll leave you these originals, and, uh, my bank is going to need a copy signed by one of his later someone, so.
Thank you very much. And when you do begin the work in the spring, you know, you'll need to have the town engineer do his inspections as you do the work.
Yes, I talked to Mr. Hamway about it, and we already set up a scapegoat coordinator.
So be sure you'll wear that, so that you don't get to paving the road and say, oh, I didn't know I had to have to look at it.
That's not going to happen.
Would the planning board like to require an escrow account be set up, like with the others?
Yeah, I mean, you, you basically need to pay for his time.
Yes, we have, as he's been reviewing it, actually.
He's, they've been paying him directly, just didn't know, I know in the past that you guys have created escrow accounts.
We haven't had any issues with him paying?
Nope, we have not, he's, he's paid, he's currently paid, yep.
Yeah, it's not that big a job, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
This is right now-
Thanks, Michelle.
Great.
So she just wanted me to remind you that it needs to be registered as well.
Thank you.
This will be your original screen. So, we have an A and R for 81 Oak Trail.
Brandon. Yeah? And Ducharme, Ducharme Dillis. Here on behalf of Stephen Cristian Catalano, 81 Oak Trail. And basically, the Catalanos own two lots up in Oak Trail, lots, what was originally lots 31 and 32. We did a lot line modification plan about a year ago, when they put the house in, which basically moved this shared property line here. At this point, they're looking to also put a pool house in, which requires them to modify that lot line once again.
Brandon, sorry.
Yep.
Where's the main road for Bolville, right there?
This is Bolville Road here.
I got you.
And this is the subdivision coming up, it's kind of up in the top, over here, these two lots. So, um, this plan is creating lots 31B, 32B, um, these are the acreages. The, the last time we were in, we talked about this does require a waiver to be a irregular coefficient. The modification is basically, this was, this is where the line is now, this dash line here, we're looking to basically straighten that out. This change actually makes the lot irregular coefficient better, or more regular.
Closer to compliance.
Correct.
So the lot was originally created as a phosphoret lot, so it didn't meet the-
Well, it was phosphoret, but it was prior to- What year was that? I believe it was 2001. So this is still 1.3 acres, so obviously, well, it is a phosphoret, like Doug said, so it's one acre minimum, so we still have more than the acre. Even this change here-
How far is that line moving at the widest point?
Probably about 20 feet.
Okay.
And it doesn't compromise the, the well or septic location, so it kind of preserves this, this lot here.
There's a house with the garage on that one, or I'm thinking of the lot right before. Are both of these vacant?
No, this is vacant, this, this is the existing house.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
I should have seen that.
So, this is a phosphoret, um, that was created before 2001 and before the shape I love. That, that makes sense. I mean, I don't know the exact dates, but definitely makes sense. But the point is that it's already, it is what it is, and, and this is not worsening it, it's-
Straightening it out a bit, I think, a little bit, by 20 feet now, it is.
It's a minor modification. So we review it again. What are they moving?
So this, this dash line here is what the line is now. So basically, what we're looking to do is just scrape that out, and that gets them the additional, gets a little room to play, they basically need like five feet. In order to get, where they're looking to put the pool house to comply with the zoning offset.
Which is 20 feet?
Correct.
And, and it does, you know, the lot was plenty big, it's not changing the front edge, it's, the, that a lot is, you know, the shape factor's more than adequate significantly anymore, so it's just- What's happening back there, the grading?
This is just a grading easement that we put on the last time we came in for an A and R. There's a septic system back in this area, basically, this flat makes it irregular, is just to accommodate a septic system. And when they installed this, they ended up kind of filling the yard here, I just want to make sure that, you know, they have an easement, so that if they ever do do something with this lot, you know, it's not going to compromise the way the yard is now.
And it's still perfectly acceptable, buildable lot.
Correct, yeah.
So, so at Century Mill, you have, you have these smaller lots in there having shared septic systems, what's, what, what does a lot like this do? You know, where do they put their septic system?
Like I said, this, this house, the septic's all the way back here. What's proposed, or what was on the approved plan, the house is here, and the septic system's up here on the front.
So, the phosphoret bylaw allows for lots as small as an acre, that's about as small as you can go, where you can still have a viable septic system that has to perk, but the septic system with the offsets, and then the well with the offsets, uh, you know, to fit on a lot, probably wouldn't work on a half-acre lot, right? Just couldn't make it work numbers-wise. But, yeah, in Century Mill, they chose to go the route of some shares, you know, probably purely from a cost perspective. They have that option to, you know, to do that. But, a one-acre lot is big enough size-wise to meet the setbacks. The issue of meeting perking is a whole different issue.
It's a whole different issue.
You can meet it, I mean, one of the challenges of kind of looking at these phosphoret subdivisions is when you take, when you took Bolton's Board of Health regulations, you get your well and your septic on there, it kind of dictated where the house would go, you know, so, by going to a shared septic, or doing something different, it gave you a little bit more flexibility to cite the house in a more desirable area. Since then, some of the Board of Health regulations have actually changed to improve that, but, you know, they had separation of about 100 feet, so you, you put all those offsets on, it kind of dictated where everything went.
Any more questions or comments? So I would make a motion to, uh, accept this A and R to modify a lot line between lots 31 and 32. It doesn't change the, either of the lots in their applicability to being a buildable, legal lot in Bolton. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Can we sign that now?
We have the mile line.
Actually, I can tell you about the one.
We've done another mile line, yes, we have everything, leave us.
Yeah.
You really worked on Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
This was dated the twenty-seventh, which I was thinking, it sounded like Thanksgiving.
I guess standard ISO.
So it's one mile line and that's it?
Oh, we have copies.
Yeah, he's, we have the three copies too. You'll sign the copies?
Yes.
Do you go ahead?
Are there a lot of empty lots up there?
I think there's sixteen. I didn't think it was gonna...
No, you wouldn't.
You thought more or less.
Oh, I thought less, I thought they were like five.
Ah, sure.
I mean, I guess the code says.
It looks like the easy ones to build on, built on, the rest are... I've driven through there a few times, I'm like, how is this even a lot? It's like straight downhill.
The one that's going to the left.
The one's like up at the top, the big houses.
It's a really good, little road.
Yeah.
And that's, that's nice.
But like, yeah, the, the big houses have the good lots and all the rest are similar. Yeah. Like a two-story basement or something.
Okay.
And your other one?
Yeah, so this... This is up at my house, this is four oh one Harvard Road. I believe this is part of the Northwoods subdivision. Two, two lots here, this is lots thirty-six and thirty-seven. Just to get your bearings, this goes up towards Harvard, Warner Road wraps around, and there are many of the subdivisions out back in here. We initially cut out a lot here, which we were actually gonna build on when my, my parents were over here. And we obviously ended up buying this house, so this one. Get rid of that lot.
Make it one parcel.
Make it one parcel. Brandon, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Where's Warner Road? Warner Road's up, up here. Okay. So basically, we're not looking to do anything to sell this lot, so we want to incorporate this back into the piece.
And so this is what you'll, what you'll have when you combine the two?
Correct, yeah.
Did this one meet the, um, lot irregularity?
Uh, no, so basically, that's why the Oaks was done, this was right afterwards. And if you remember back, there was several iterations of Northwoods, the original preliminary went in and proposed zoning prior to that change being put in, because then, I think halfway through, we added the Willrood property to the back.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that piece was actually subject to irregularity coefficient where this, this wasn't. So at the time, when you recreated, it wasn't existing either.
But by combining it, you're losing that grandfather.
I'm not sure how that, that moved out.
I'm not sure either, but that's just my thought, that if, if at some point down the road, you wanted to go back and subdivide it again.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't have a lot of...
That was the one thing when we were talking about.
Then you'd have to meet the bylaws at the same time.
Exactly, exactly. So, we're not really worried about it. Because I don't see doing anything with it, to be honest with you. Well, we're looking at doing this, it requires, you know, a shared driveway with...
So there aren't any really requirements about it, it's combining two lots into one lot?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the A and R to combine lots thirty-six and thirty-seven to make a lot thirty-seven A at four oh one Harvard Road.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Great. Um, we're signing. Where's the Sharpie?
Oh, you're taking it home. Aye, taking that Sharpie home.
So we sign here?
Where's the signature block?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Is there a registry? Not sure, yeah, so we should put that on there, yeah.
I guess we'll sign it next time.
Yeah. All right.
Oh, what happened?
No signature.
Stand and have the, uh...
Oh! Sorry about that, guys, I didn't even notice it.
You can just drop it by and, you know, we'll sign it.
Okay.
Probably won't be till the next meeting, though.
Okay. Does it really matter? Can we do it right here without lines?
Can we create one?
Or you probably could just write it down.
Yeah, because you don't have to wait until after the New Year's.
Yeah, because the next meeting, assuming they approve it tonight, it's January.
Yeah. Who knows if it's ready or not, if they don't, we can bring it back.
Yeah.
So let's try to at least step back.
Take it out of the box.
Get it done.
Get her done, that's what the box says.
Trying to keep your agenda clean, you know?
Yes.
Really just want to move on.
Do we have any more triparties today?
Any more bylaws we wanna?
Oh my God, trying to sort of move.
Sir, are you sending a copy as well?
Yeah, Brandon, did you do the copies as well?
You don't know, I've done it last week, yeah, I have everything.
Are you nice with your copies at that?
Yeah, we'll make your all copies of that. Do you, do you guys want a copy?
Well, yeah, the board is gonna want a copy, so do you want to at least just sign one, or do you want to just do all three copies that way, Jonathan?
I'll do them all.
Okay, that's okay.
Works. Yeah, I mean, he's, he has to register it, so he's gonna find out whether they accept it or not.
Yeah.
That's what we said, well.
Erica's piece of right there. Uh, yes.
Neighbor listed, uh, her house for sale today.
Which one?
Um, what is it, Robert's mother lot, our mother's, yeah. It's a, it's a big move, they've been there for decades.
Yeah, I know.
It's a cool lot.
Yeah, Louis just passed away a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, I should have seen that, because that sucks.
The idea is to say that, yeah, I don't... Hold it with you.
Oh, it's like the Declaration of Independence.
I know, I was just gonna say.
Time to stretch.
So that's what Mr. Face is here for, Jonathan.
You can just come to it.
Erica had emails from the guys about that.
Yeah.
Um, because of the fact that your next meeting is outside the twenty-one day period. Erica chose to bring it in.
I hope people had a look at the Century Mill sixty-four sheets times top piece. That took a while.
It's a big recording tape.
Can we separate it out into a couple rooms, actually? We had some in here, some over there. That was pre-camera, I believe.
James is on deck.
Doug, how did cameras change things?
Let's swear.
Hence the reason why I'm going out.
Well, you know, for years, we always had, um... Coming for the conference. And it was always in the papers. And, I mean, that's what it always was, for a long, long time, and then, and they stopped, so there was a period of like... What are we doing here? I can't say that it changed.
Don't zap him.
Everyone's got their car.
So these, these should be red flags?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're becoming a graffiter, Brandon.
She works. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thanks.
See you.
So we have a, uh...
So there's an additional A, A and R.
Yeah?
We are left.
Big interining parcel here, kind of three lots here, we've got access through here. This is also all those, the town line, it's contiguous with other acreage that the owner owns and this does. So there's plenty of acreage to get up and back there. That's a big uplay for another time. Buying these two lots right now, okay, um, we've been working development there and, uh, our intention is, everybody knows this old house here, um, will probably be coming back in. We've already done protest for a demo permit, we'll put three of those in here.
Everyone know, know where we're talking about?
No. Uh, since house to your knowledge, greater than seventy-five years of age? I know, it's kind of a random question, but if it is, Bolton Historical Commission has a demo delay by law.
Yeah.
So we need to have a hearing with them.
It's just the Berlin line, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It'll have to go through them anyways, no matter what. They see all demo applications, even at the house's tenement, so it'll go through them.
That's almost as demo, never mind, too wishful.
Then they probably won't raise too much of a think about it.
Yeah. So...
So this is one parcel now?
Yes.
And you're...
We're dividing three lots.
So dividing three lots out of the total or off of a bigger parcel?
Off of a bigger parcel.
So what is left?
This comes all the way back up here, about twelve hundred feet, all the way through here, there's a pond back here, this one end up back here. About five, about five acres back in here, and again...
Yeah, it's about that, in the back.
Yeah, again, it's contiguous with this land.
Well, this plan should show that as lot four or something like that, because it's, you're creating a different lot there.
Well, respectfully, I think we're creating these lots and leaving this lot the way it is.
But it can't, it's not the same lot, it's a different lot. Like he just, he just combined two lots, thirty-one and thirty-two, and he called it thirty-one A. So by changing that lot...
Well, I guess my question is, this is lot one, two, and three, whatever this lot was, it is.
No, no.
It's not, it's changed, it's a smaller lot. So when you record this in the registry...
No, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm asking you.
Yeah, so, and I, I just think you want to get this right.
Yeah.
Because when you go to record it, it's, that lot is no longer what it was, it's changed, so typically, it would become, and maybe it was lot one, maybe it's lot one A, or one B, or one C, or whatever.
It seems dumb, because you're right, it's just a residual, but it is a new lot.
Because they need to have a way to distinguish between what was there before and what has now been created, and that lot now is separate from these three lots.
Okay, you just walk me through this, because I'm impatient, so just be thirty seconds. Let's say this is lot nine, okay, because there's no nine on here. Is this not still lot nine?
Correct, it is still not lot nine, it would be nine A.
Nine A.
Or whatever you want.
No, because, because what currently is on file in the, in the Board of Registars for this parcel of land, this whole entire thing
Right.
is lot nine, let's say. By doing this subdivision, you've changed that lot nine, it's not the same piece of land, it's a fraction of that.
Right.
So it needs to have a different name, I believe, I mean, I'm not telling you, I'm not the Board of Registars, but I think they need to be able to identify it independently from what it was previously. Otherwise, there could be confusion, there could be lot nine that's eight acres and lot nine that's five acres and, you know, that, they don't, they don't mesh up. So typically, and, and, again, I'm right, I'm not saying I'm right.
No, 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 I'm not saying you're wrong.
But typically, when you, when, when we see an A and R that creates lots off of the bigger lot and leaves the bigger piece, it would show the entire lot. And, and, and it would show the remaining piece as lot whatever.
What is this note right here? And I'm just, I'm just asking.
So it, it just references, you know, what, what map number and parcel number, but...
Wish we had asked it while Brandon was here, because he, he would know for sure. He's the, he's the surveyor.
No, that's the Berlin piece, but you can see it's on the same paper. So although the town line goes through there, it's, it's...
So, so we're sort of, and from my opinion, I think we're in the same place we were with him, which is it looks like you've got two hundred feet of frontage on each of your lots, you've got more than one point eight acres, and you've got a lot shape factor of greater than point five, so they qualify for an A and R.
Right.
No issue. And we can, we can vote that tonight, you know, that, that these are, you know, they meet the qualifications for an A and R.
Okay.
To create these lots. But I think, I, I may be wrong, but I think there might be an issue with recording it because of what's remaining.
Okay.
And in that case, I'll leave it to the Board of Registars to tell you what you need to do, and if you did need to change this plan because it's not recordable.
We'd have to come back here and do the same thing.
Then we, then we could sign it again.
Okay.
But, I mean, for me, it seems like this, this should show the whole context, so it should show, you know, for us to really consider this, it should show the whole property and how these three fit into it. You know, we, we, you know, so we're getting these three pieces and we don't have any idea, you know, kind of what's going on back there. And so would you say that doesn't matter, or...
Well, it kind of, I mean, to me, it kind of does matter, because you're leaving a lot that unless it has frontage somewhere else, it doesn't have sufficient frontage.
Well, again, what I'm, the only thing I am pointing out is, although this is a town line, this is contiguous with another fifteen acres this way. Another seven hundred feet of frontage.
How does that work, in frontage wise, if it's kind of two...
Well...
It's whatever the most restrictive town is, we had this on the Hudson line a number of years ago. Hudson had like a hundred feet or under fifty, and we have two hundred feet in there.
Yeah, you came from one too.
Like a hundred and sixty, so it didn't work.
But this is more than four and a half acres. It would be big enough to qualify as a backland lot, but, but if you're trying to create a backland lot, this should say lot four, which is a backland lot, and it show that it meets the backland lot requirements. The problem is... The problem is, this lot is now sort of, you know, undefined, and, and it's not a buildable lot until it is defined. So I, I do think it's, it's, it's a little...
This is not imperative at the site, I'm, okay, I'd love to come back and see another two hours.
Yeah, I, I think that's right. I mean, and, and I care less what the rest of it looks like, but I do care
Yeah.
that whatever's left is either a parcel, not a building lot.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't meet zoning. Or it's a backland lot, because it does meet zoning. And we'd have to look at that, but your, the, the plan that's presented to us should say that. Somebody should have already told you that, who's a, you know, a surveyor engineer, who knows, knows.
I, 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 you know, I mean, if you want to get, you know, I mean, the, the broad picture of this is certainly to make this a lot at some point in time.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, right now, this is creating a...
Okay, and e- even if it's a parcel, you know, you could add some acreage right off of here, okay?
You can't, you can't.
Why is that?
You cannot use acreage in a different town to create your frontage.
Also, what I'd like to see in here...
Not the frontage, I'm talking acreage.
Can't use it to create the, the ability for the lot to meet Bolton's zoning.
Okay, so...
So this, it needs to, on its own, if it's gonna, if a house is gonna be built in Bolton with a Bolton permit, it needs to, on its own, meet Bolton's zoning. As a backland lot, it needs to be four and a half acres. It doesn't have to meet a lot of regularity, once it's four and a half acres. But it does need to have, I think it's 50 feet, so it probably does meet it, but we don't know that.
Yeah, so basically, it's this land here, this is my question, and it's more question. So if this was three acres, but I get 15 over here, okay, that still doesn't meet a building lot requirement?
That's right, a single building lot. Now, if you were to do a subdivision, you could, you could do a subdivision that crossed town lines and get both towns to approve it. But no...
That sounds pretty easy.
It's a little, it's been done, but it's, it's a lot of work. But you, an individual building lot needs to meet, um, we had somebody come to us a few years ago who had a lot right on, on the line between Bolton and Hudson.
Yeah.
And they didn't have enough in Bolton, and they didn't have enough in Hudson. And they said, but if we put them together, we got a lot here. And it was turned down, because you can't do that. You know, you can't use, uh, land for a single lot across one town line to, to make it meet one town's requirements. In other words, if you had enough land in the other town and their requirements were less stringent and you met their requirements, then you could build in that town and get their permit. But you wouldn't be able to build in Bolton with a Bolton permit, and Bolton had this.
So, oh, oh, okay, I think I understand what you're saying.
But if you have, a backland lot is four and a half acres, 50 feet, as long as it's not more than two contiguous. So you can't have, you know, four or five of them right next to each other.
Right.
And then there's also an envelope around the house that you've got to meet in terms of, you know, an area where the house is built.
Setbacks. Nature and...
And an upland, I mean, if you read our bylaws, it's a little section of upland. Right. This probably would meet it, but you, if, you don't have to put it on here that you want this to be a backland lot. But if it's not, then it's a parcel and it's not a building lot. And somebody would have to come back at a later time to get an A and R for that.
That was the intention, okay, so what will they do with this back here?
So I think we want to see that that says parcel or whatever, and says how many acres it is.
Okay, can I consider, well, then...
There are two other issues for me. There's a pond back here.
Yeah.
You know, when you come back, I want to see that on there.
Well, you're gonna see the whole part, that's what you just said.
And, and then another thing, you know, another issue about this property is that it was a dump.
Okay, so let's, let's address that.
In here, tires, glass, cars, so what's going on?
It's being cleaned up right now, as a matter of fact, it has been for the past month or so.
So you're working with which boards?
The Board of Health and Conservation.
Right.
Great, thank you.
We just had a sidewalk, okay, that were, you know, okay...
Recycle the tires, or do you, no?
We've, somebody did.
Yeah.
But they're not on site, you're taking it out of Bolton.
They are.
I know they are.
Are they yours?
He has a laundry, he has a laundry plant at the Board of Health, and he has a control plant at the Board of Health.
Does the school bus, sorry?
And further than that.
And further than that, with Conservation.
We're, we're bringing you the dump slips and so on and so forth.
So when you're...
We did this right.
So when they dig foundations for the houses...
They don't dig up an old lot, do you?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, okay, just, just for your clarification, it's not, there's nothing buried here, okay? It's all like most, most farm stuff, okay, that people just put in a corner and it grew a life of its own, and all of a sudden, dust hits, and now this weeds growing through it and everything else. There, there's been nothing subs, subsurface of it seen.
So there've been water tests, um, is that going on now?
Uh, no.
Yeah, it's all, the, the water tests, no, when you build, it will be, of course.
Great, great, good.
You'd be...
I just heard about a homeowner had tires in their yard, they discovered tires in their yard.
You'd be very happy when you saw those.
Do you have to report to a person buying that land or house that was on there previously, or?
No, it's not a dump, okay, it's an old farm. Think about an old farm, okay, where people used to do it, okay? They just keep piling stuff in the...
Bigger than a pile of towels.
Yeah, you know, and, and, you know, okay, I mean, that...
And if they find anything, it has to be rewarded.
But if there's like an old tractor or something...
No, there's nothing like that, yeah. There was a washing machine.
There was an old dump out on my property, and I cleaned it up, took me about five years, unbelievable.
There was a big...
Almost metal.
There was a rumor, okay, that there was a carrot in the, okay...
In the pond, right.
A quote, they wrote.
What pond doesn't have a carrot in it?
But I do have bottles everywhere, we have a little collection, it's amazing.
We've actually been working, uh...
It surfaces on its own, as time goes by.
Pretty well with you guys.
So I, I don't think you have any issue with these lots, they meet the A and Rs, but I do think you need to define the other parcel.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't think you'd be able to record it without anyone, but...
No, I, I, I don't need to get it recorded today, but can I get on the agenda first?
That seems fair.
I'm sorry.
That seems fair. Our next meeting is, uh...
It should be January 8th, I think we need to approve the schedule, but, yep, that's part of your administrative tasks, once...
Yeah, we can get you on.
So I will, I'll be able to black this up, okay?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna get this, all right?
Sure.
Yeah, oh yeah, take them on, Lauren, I'll allow your...
I want you to...
Water, please.
Water, please.
Okay, Brian, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the education.
Robert, let me also give you the application, because it wasn't, it's all the way, it's filled out. All right, so that's another thing, order me this, we'll be interested.
Thank you.
Thanks for the patience.
No, thank you for trying to get this thing done, by your permission, like you said, thanks for the education.
And we have driveway permits in Bolton, and you can't discharge water under the road, you see, no.
Believe me, his son is well aware of what a driveway permit is.
For the, you know...
And a building permit.
I've been doing this 35 years, I'm doing it two months. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye, Robert, nice seeing you.
Nice seeing you.
We've been, except for the administrative tasks.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Erica, here in Arity.
Nice to meet you, Erica.
Nice to meet you.
So I assume Josh is here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, no, left in, just Josh.
Okay, I'm at Eve, and, uh, James.
Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, and James.
That should be you.
Eric needs a, needs a name tag. He's new.
We'll, we'll work on that for you, right, sorry, I thought that we...
So where do you come to us from?
Well, um, my background is in civil engineering, I was working for a firm in Wolfen, Kansas group. So, um, I did a little bit of planning and concept, particularly related to site layout, and we did a lot of design and permitting and quite a bit of construction oversight, so...
And you are an engineer?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
We're happy to have you.
We don't have that.
I know a lot about stormwater, so any stormwater questions, feel free to pass them my way.
So why did you switch from that to...
That's where my interests were, you know, that's kind of the direction I wanted to take my career, and thankfully, that's what I'm getting to do, so...
Well, that's great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You picked a good night to join us.
I know, I told her, that's why I'm here, because this is not a typical night.
Okay, I was just kind of wondering if this is...
It's not a typical night, no. She was trial by fire, her first day here, she went on a site visit with Harold, and it was really, we just threw her right in.
Which site?
Uh, which you go look at Centuryville.
And then actually, you took me for a north wind, so I could see that as well, so, it's good, yeah. All right, so...
You fill her in on all that Centuryville has to offer?
I have, I've been filling her in as we have been going.
A lot.
Thank you, yeah.
So when, 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 uh, when was the decision made for Andy to start attending meetings again?
Um, the decision was made a, a couple of months ago, an email came out from Don Lo, the town administrator, stating that he was allowed to attend meetings as long as he was accompanied by either his engineer or his attorney.
Okay.
He knew, yes. And he's still not allowed in town hall.
Okay.
What's this? I missed a piece of, you know, let me see.
You're missing a piece of information that maybe we'll tell you later.
Okay.
No, we will, not maybe, we will, but...
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
We had a period, a cooling off period.
All right, do you want to move on to the administrative?
Yes, sure.
All right, so the first one?
We wanted to welcome you first, though.
Oh, thank you. It's been a crazy first two days.
I bet.
Um, so we need to, um, go over the design review board members.
You have to appoint them.
Appoint them, yes.
That was supposed to be done, it's a while ago.
So it's just reappointing them, it's their, it's a one-year appointment. So it continues to be Michelle Tuck, Ted Kirschner, and Marshall McKee.
To make a motion to nominate the three above-named individuals for the 2013, the 2014 term for the designer reboard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
The next item is to approve the schedule for 2014.
So that's set up for every second and fourth Wednesday, as you have always been meeting, and those are your dates.
So in the past, did we kind of pick and choose, or do we...
No.
That was the summer.
Yeah, the summer, we, we often might only do once in July or August, if we have the workload that allows for it. And then like what has happened here, if it falls on, you know, Christmas Eve or Thanksgiving Eve, you know, we'll throw it as well, but otherwise...
Those don't fall on anything as far as I, when I typed that up, I didn't see in holidays.
Looks good to me.
So Chuck Black and Robert Pace will be coming in on the 8th.
Okay. Put this at first.
Yeah.
Walk that over for any holidays?
I don't remember.
That doesn't include, that doesn't include hearings or stuff like that, because you warrant hearings and stuff, right? Right, there's, yeah.
Well, it will, you can have your hearings on the same date.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's another thing that will, this gets tonight.
Yeah, we tend to do for that.
Is you have to set your hearing date. Yeah, you can do it on the same.
Yeah, I, I meant, there are, there are often other meetings that we end up, you know, second meetings, whatever, that someone might need to...
So, um, so we have to have our warrant articles completed by the, by January 24th?
If you're gonna have your hearing on the 12th, on February 12th.
We have to have our hearing on February 12th.
Yeah, that's the latest that you can have, yeah.
That's the latest we can have our hearings, so the articles need to be finalized by 24th.
So that's a final draft, because it gets changed after the hearing, right, or you can make changes based on a hearing?
Yes, you can make changes based on a hearing, yes, so the final would have to be typed up and submitted on the 13th, after the hearing, which, um, can be done. It's just that, once you advertise in the paper, which has to happen 14 days prior, and then seven days prior, once you advertise, you have to be able to have something to show to the public. They can come to the town clerk and say, I'd like to see that. So that gives you until either the 24th, if you're gonna advertise in the, um, Qlik item, but if your back is against the wall and you guys don't have it, you know, something finalized, you can advertise in the Worcester Telegraph Gazette, which is every day, and then you could go to the two Wednesdays before, and it gives you a little extra time. So it's really just based on how well you guys are doing as to when you advertise, but the date will be February 12th, if that's what this board chooses.
And, um, so you'll notice on here the aquifer protection overlay district, and that was, Michelle reminded me that that was something that Jennifer and I were discussing previously, and I guess our discussion was related to, you know, I don't know if I'll have time, you know, to do the research for this, but it was related to the master plan and kind of the Bolton, uh, Bolton Orchard's area. So there was a discussion at that time about increasing development around Bolton Orchard's, and I don't know if it was the master plan or it's the UMass study, you know, they said that that area was, you know, basically from Still River Road up the hill, that area, um, is very important for recharging our aquifer. And then I, when I was working on the carrot, you know, the barn by law, I stumbled on Towns and has a, you know, an aquifer protection district, and quite a number of towns do, anyway.
And so that's what, another table of uses within that, like a restrictive table of uses or something?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's really about, um, the main concern is petroleum products, you know, being used within, you know, that protection district. You know, some towns are much stricter, and some towns, they're just very concerned about. I think, I think the situation on that hillside down to Still River is that it's a very sandy soil, so if you spill something, the fluid doesn't kind of go down and spread out horizontally, it just basically goes straight down liquids well, so, um, that's, you know, that's how these districts are kind of mapped out.
Do it establishes zone, like a zone one area, where only certain things would be allowed, and it would be fairly restrictive. It would be that area that Jonathan's talking about.
Well, there are different levels of restriction, like I think I've mentioned here before, Sudbury, like, has a very strict one. And I think Towns is, is, you know, a good model, it's, you know, it's mostly, you know, my, you know, the way I come to this is, you know, there, there's one, there was the experience with the Bolton Office Park, no, not Bolton Office Park, the Bolton Safety Center. There was an oil tank in the old building, contractors cut the line and it wasn't drained properly, so it was slowly leaking into the ground. And so, you know, being in a, you know, in a butter to that, you know, our water was monitored. But the town, you know, it was a town project, but the town, I don't, I think they had to get emergency, like $30,000 to do that initial monitoring, and it might have, you know, gone up to 50 or 70, like, three years in. So, you know, we're all on the same water, and, you know, so petroleum spills are, I think, a concern as well as other, you know, chemical spills for everybody. And, you know, I don't think most people have insurance to cover it, so if there's a problem, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a town taxpayer problem, it's not gonna be something you can really go after the homeowner for, for very much. So...
So I'm not sure, what is, I'm not sure exactly what Bromfield does, but they're in that area, you know, is it like a legacy type grandfathering type thing?
So that's the, the sand pit?
No, Bromfield, there aren't.
There's a business right on 110.
Bromfield Labs, is that what you're...
Bromfield, yeah.
113 Still River Road.
Yeah, I'm not really sure exactly.
What do they do?
I'm not too sure, I know Mr. Bromfield was before the Board of Health last night.
Yes, well, I mean, I'm not saying they do anything bad, I'm just saying, if they were doing something that was in the bylaw, you know, say like some type of grandfather.
Yeah, so there'd be, I think there'd be, you know, some grandfathering, I think, I think there are probably some, you know, petroleum products and chemicals that we, you know, we would really want to be careful about in that area, you know.
I was just wondering, existing, how that works.
Right. So, yeah, so I have to do more research and present something even more to you. And time is pretty short, so, how are you feeling about medical marijuana for?
Great.
Yeah, no.
You guys have some maps?
Oh, I do have maps, can you grab them?
Thank you. So, everyone had got a copy of what we sort of put together based on the list I put. I intended to be a pretty short, pretty specific, uh, bylaw that number one requires a special permit, so it goes through our special permitting process, um, includes additional criteria, such as a floor plan review and a safety review. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, uh, the big issue is what, what do we do about setbacks and, uh, and where do we allow it? So most towns are saying, let's just allow it in this part of town, the industrial zone or something like that, keep it as far away from, you know, where people are as possible. We had looked at, um, the idea of extending, the, the state law has a 500-foot setback to schools, playgrounds, and any places where children are likely to be found, which we started to make a list and realized that could, you know, I, I think we wanna have a specific list that would include playgrounds, ballfields, Boy Scout and Girl Scout camps, golf courses, you know, so we could specifically identify the parcels that would be included, um, in, included in being prohibited from allowing it. And if you look at our business and limited business, we really don't have that many places that are zoned business, limited business, and we don't have places that are not close to either residences or other businesses, so I, I'm of the opinion that we should not allow it in business or limited business. We would allow it in industrial and in residential if it meets the setbacks. And again, that we would have a list, instead of just relying on the wording in the state bylaw that says places where children are likely to gather, the list involved in what those places are, so that we're very specific about it, and, and also include churches.
So, the limited business and the business is just tricky because you have a lot of different areas, but last time we were talking about maybe that was, you know, a spot.
So this is what, five, what is this?
So, what, what, 500 is the, the, um, this is around these zoning districts, okay? 500 is the light pink, 650 is the darker, and then 750 is the darker, so you just start to see. I, I think what 500, we, we wanted to do a little exercise to see if, um, increasing it from the 500 made a significant difference, and, and, and we'll, we'll look through these maps and see what we all think, but, you know, I don't, I don't, to me, those extra bands don't do all that much more, you know what I mean, I think the 500 feet does, does a good job. But what I, what I'm proposing is that we increase greatly the number of places that are subject to the 500-foot restriction.
So, but is this showing we wanna keep it 500 feet away from businesses?
This is showing how many houses will get caught within the buffer zone versus the other.
So, yeah, if you, this, this is, this one, particular one shows, if we were to say also, keep it 500 feet away from business and limited business, but what we, and what we could alternatively do is just not even go there, just say it's not allowed in business and limited business, it's only allowed in industrial and residential, we only have four districts, and we actually have five, this is limited business, um, recreation, recreation. So, not allowed in business or limited business and limited business recreation, so they're just not allowed there. Then, only allowed in, in industrial and residential with a 500-foot setback to any residential unit in any place where, uh, children are likely, schools, you know, that list that I just made, schools, churches, playgrounds, ballfields, so we're gonna, we're gonna start to see more overlays here. You can see that that one. So, this is showing us, again, those three buffer zones, as it relates to conservation land, which is green. We talked about whether or not, you know, kids likely to go hang out in conservation land, well, maybe that's a place that we wanna protect. Recreation being, again, the golf course, the schools, um, this might be the ballfields.
Boy Scout, I think.
Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, correct. I'm not sure why this is showing, that it looks like that's the scene here, the, uh, housing. But the big one here is showing the open space, that if you include the open space, it, you know, it limits a lot, and in fact, if you include the open space, it looks like it makes industrial.
Recreation and conservation.
Why is that right here?
Is that the soccer fields for Kerrigan?
I don't know, I'll have to figure out what that is, but it, but it sort of excludes that. Doesn't leave too many other places, right?
Well, I mean, there's a whole bunch of white areas, right?
Right.
And that, that was what I was concerned about last time, I mean, I don't know, picket place, here. They're gonna open a marijuana dispensary with potentially hundreds and hundreds of car trips every day, these little rows, these, these, um, you know, these houses are gonna be really, whoever is unlucky enough.
Well, we haven't done houses yet, 'cause I'm proposing-
Well, 500 feet, but it's still, you know, if the, if the dispensary is like there, you know, it's still gonna affect everybody around them with the traffic and the, uh-
Well, let's go to that one.
And you look at Mr. Shin, you know, it's like, it's like a brainstorm.
Yes, so, so, the law, the state law does not make any distinction between dispensary and growth facilities, and, you know, it's not up to us to go down that path, so they're one and the same, either or.
But like I said today-
It seems like a completely different use.
Kind of target our bylaw towards one way or the other.
We can, but I'm not, I'm not choosing to.
Okay.
And, and if you would like to, I think you might need more time.
I think there might be a reason-
And it could be added to it later.
There might be a reason to.
I'm not heading down that path right now.
If it was a storefront, though, I mean, there'll be so much traffic for it.
Yeah, I mean, it might be a good reason to, if it's a dispensary, to put it somewhere where there's already a major road. Maybe if it's a growth facility, that's not so, that's not-
So, I, I don't know this at all for a fact, but I don't think, I am of the opinion, and the best thing to do would be to ask Larry Delaney, 'cause he's an attorney and he has a good perspective on these things, I don't believe the Attorney General would approve a local bylaw that created regulations that treated them differently, no, it's just my opinion, you know, I don't know. But anyway, I'm not proposing we go that route right now. So now this is looking, I think, on water, um, water supply and wetlands, and you end up with not very many places. So the, I, I guess what this is showing, and I, we, you know, we, we just wanted to look at these maps and, and see if they told us anything, but once you start using 500 feet and you apply it to a lot of parcels, it restricts most of the towns. We don't, we don't have the residential one, I guess.
This, this is coming up a lot empty, Old Bay, between Old Bay and Mary Street, which is the Apple, or I think that's Bolton Orchards, Orchards, up here.
Yep.
Are the, the big part of it. And the other, we were talking about this big parcel here.
This is the, where's the Bosco's?
This is pretty, pretty much a landlocked space, um, in between-
Isn't that the one you're talking about?
Oh, Bosco's.
No, Bosco's, right, yeah. So this is, this is some landlocked land that is, is behind, uh, South Hill Road, behind Slade's.
Can we give them their own ramp?
Hell, hell, go for it.
So I, I think the one that's most useful, and there is, I can have a smaller one, it's really rather rough.
Great wallpaper.
Yeah. So these, these, these three-
Yes, please, Tony, yeah.
These three show setbacks for residential, so 500-
650, I think.
650 and 750. So if, if you just did 500 feet on residential, and had the list of schools and playgrounds and things like that, you end up, let's, let's compare this, I'll get this one. You know, you end up with only big parcels that are out on their own. And it pretty much excludes these business areas.
So on this one, it's not an exclusion, it's just staying.
Well, it's based on this house there, which is, you know, could be removed.
Yeah, somebody could buy, somebody owned that parcel could remove the house and say, "There's no longer a residence there."
So what's the rationale for excluding limited business of this, I mean, this is a business, right?
This is another way of looking at the map of conservation.
Especially the retail facility, it's a business.
There's the huge one off of Sugar Road. I mean, I think if you're gonna have it, you just want it next to 495, really. I don't know.
Well, in, 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 I mean, one argument, Jonathan, would be that most of our business and limited business has residential close by.
But then, I mean, when you buy a house in Bolton in a residential area, you expect not to have a business come in next door, even if it's 500 feet away, it's zoned residential, that's what you expect to be done.
Yeah, when I bought here, I, I looked, I looked at this map and-
Right, I mean, there's a, I think there's a sort of a fairness idea that if I, you know, I, I want to expect that zoning is gonna stay constant, I want, if I'm buying a residential area, I, I want it to stay residential, I don't, and it's, I don't want a business to pop up, especially a marijuana dispensary, I mean, that's not just a business, that's, that brings other problems with it, including, we've, it's, it's, you know, potentially a lot of, it's a security problem, as we've heard, especially if there's a significant amount of, marijuana stored there, because it's a cash business, there's, you know, we know that because of banking, federal banking regulations, it's only have to use cash, so it's, it's a target for crime, I mean, this would be a disaster if it was down a back road in a residential area.
Well, so, so, but if it went through the special permit process and then everybody's like you up in arms, is it gonna go through?
Yeah, but it's-
Like all the butters.
You could say that.
Well, you only need three people on the planning board plus two selectmen.
As David pointed out, right?
Two.
To force one of these on the special permit.
You need four.
Okay, four and two.
But I think it's a business.
Okay, so this one's ruled out 'cause it's close to the high school.
Right.
So let's say if we allowed it at business and limited business and industrial, so the question is, can we do it there on that side, on the north side of 117?
I think you could, I, I'm not sure what the green thing was up there.
Well, but here, what, what house is that?
Could that have been a part of the Delaney, uh, park up back there?
Oh, it's, yeah, the thing on the stone, what's it called, the, uh-
You go up Delaney Road and-
Delaney Open Space?
Something Project, I forget what it is.
I bring my dog up there every now and then.
Yeah. So-
It's water, yeah, there's, there's like a-
Oh, that's, yeah, that's wetlands, that's what that is, yeah, it's a big swamp.
So I think you could do it here, I think here you have, um, a lacrosse field, right? Which is right here.
There's a horse ring field, that's what you're talking about?
That's right, near the town garden.
And then there's town fields back here.
The garden.
So, if you, if you excluded those and the schools.
Blend right in.
You know, these are schools, so do 500 feet around that.
Yeah.
But you could possibly get a portion over here on this side, you know, here or here, of 495.
That's the cemetery, isn't it?
I mean, if you went and just said, "Just business," which-
Looks like you could get it in there too, into Bolton Corners.
If our bylaw said "just business," would you exclude that because of the schools? Would the Attorney General be like, "You're giving this one little spot," would they reject it, or, or is that?
I don't know, um, no, as long as you're not specifically outlining a parcel, if you're saying you, "We allow it in business, yeah, in limited business and industrial, but it still needs to meet, and we, you know, it needs to meet, it has to meet the setbacks in the state bylaw, and then we, we could certainly add to that list, specific places, which I think is a good idea to do.
So, yeah, so what about some of this, the village overlay coming up with a mixed use? So say they're talking about this area, putting an overlay here with mixed use, what does that do then?
Then it would make that a non-advocable area if we had the residential included.
Oh, right. It's tough.
It is tough.
It's really tough.
Well, we don't, we don't have to say, I mean, we, it can be in business, it still would be, the overlay just overlayed on top of that.
Overlay, yeah.
So it would still be business.
They could choose not to do, they could choose not to do the overlay.
But if they do do, that business is gone, I guess, once there's a house there.
Yeah, but it would be like so many years down the road for that all to come out that, you know, I don't know, but James, so you're, you know, you're really, have a strong point of view, so if we took, if we took David's idea of gearing it towards either dispensary, Doug doesn't wanna do this, but if we geared it towards dispensary or growing, like-
Doug, I'm not saying do two different sets of bylaws.
No, do one that's geared towards-
This isn't easy, but come up and say, what does the town want? Does it want a cultivation, fitting in with right to farm, putting it at the end of a cul-de-sac?
How do you feel about farming?
No, no, I mean, this isn't a farm, this is a industrial- Well, dispensary is.
But like, James, how would you feel if they were just growing in Bolton, here you are?
It has to be endorsed, though, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like this box in the field.
And we can't say, "We allow growing, but we don't allow," state law allows.
No, 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 but, no, you can, you can target your bylaws one way or the other, Dennis did that, and I think the other side, I think Norwell was starting to do.
What did they, which did they prefer, the dispensary?
I think they wanted- No, Dennis wanted the dispensary, yes, and Norwell wanted to do it in resi areas, in agricultural areas, so I think cultivation. But Dennis was definitely the dispensary.
You know, so we, we, you know, we would be pushing it more towards growing if we were, you know, if we were showing a preference for the big open spaces in Bolton, which-
And then I think, yeah, the tables totally turn, now you're starting to target larger open space, agricultural, existing farms, the total opposite of, I want that the business-
They have buildings, they're not far to be endorsed.
Sure, 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 sure.
They would build-
Or they would build.
They would build, 'cause it's certainly economically useful. A barn-like structure through the special permit process, so it would look like a big red barn. How would you feel about that?
If you're gonna make it residential, that makes more sense, because we have those-
I don't think you can restrict it, I think the bylaw says, I mean, the state law says you can, you can, it's intended to create entities that both produce and sell their own product. They don't have to, but it's intended that they do-
But they could be in separate places.
No.
They can be, but they don't have to.
But it's just what they want to be, would they want to be dispensing, like on-
I didn't think you could sell it a cultivation place.
On that, you know, narrow back road, would you wanna be dispensing?
You don't have to, but you can.
So here, here's where, you know, I think where we're at with this. I don't have any issue with any way this board feels strongly about going with this, I'm not saying, "Don't do it." I'm saying, if we wanna do a bylaw for May, it's gonna be a stripped, you know, a, a very stripped-down bylaw that, that talks about the kinds of things that we've been talking about. And, and we can continue this discussion about where is it allowed, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on it, other than I think we need to protect all the citizens of Bolton from being, you know, harmed by this, so that, that's my intent.
Do we have a map of what the state laws would look like? Like, what it currently is, where could it go? It's not one of these maps, or?
But to finish that thought, so one, one idea would be to- But to finish that thought, so one idea would be to not put anything for town meeting in May and save me any more time.
Yeah.
And that's fine. If this board decides that, there's no, nothing wrong with that, nothing more, even though we were charged with doing that, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
There will be people who will be upset, because we only have that moratorium until town meeting. We could extend the moratorium until...
The end of the year.
The end of the year. And it's possible that the state will allow further extensions. So you could, you know, you could play the game of, well, we assume we're gonna be able to extend.
So the AG says, right, the end of 2014 should be plenty of town, you guys should have the activity. I think right now, plenty of attorneys are skeptical that they're gonna stick to their guns.
Right, yeah, I was reading that in your notes, right.
But at the end of the year, I mean, that's what folks are coming up with.
So we have something in a month with the holidays in between, this and this. Maybe, maybe we should just be putting an extension in the...
I think this gets...
I don't think there's only gonna be five per county.
What's that?
Five per county, that's what the state law, five per county.
Sterling's gone.
Yeah, they're already looking at the first hundred, we're not in the list.
Sterling has asthma?
And, yeah, Bolton doesn't even have, isn't even on the list as an applicant.
They approved for a cultivation site.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, and I go back to, this is the way I felt. I don't think there's this urgency that we have to do this by May. I don't feel that way at all, okay? I think the initial round of sites have already been affected. The towns who wanted these things have already come forward and said, "Great." So I think the urgency and the fear of people trying to force it on Bolton, I think that's kind of passed. So I'm not of the mind that we need to rush this through. But I did say I'd do it, so I'm trying to, you know, in good faith, move forward with that.
I'd be interested just to see what the current state law is, where it could...
So the state law says schools, schools, so we have one, two, three.
Yeah, so it can't be there.
And...
It doesn't say anything about business or limited business.
No, it does not, it does not, that's true.
So it's, so it's, most of this mapping...
Schools and places where children are likely to congregate. So I think you logically make the assumption that that would include playgrounds, but playgrounds are near schools. I think you would logically say that the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts would be where children congregate.
And maybe conservation areas, which put a...
I don't think conservation areas would fall under, I don't think golf courses would fall under.
Then it's, yeah, the...
Well, it's not much, I mean, it's, that's it.
And says nothing about residences.
No.
Does a 500-foot setback?
It's, yeah, I think...
No, state law is not 500 to residences, it's only the schools.
Is it really?
Yep.
So I like that in Concord they had a 3,000-foot setback for schools.
Yeah, so if this is, if this is 500, you know, do 3,000, you know, it gets... Yeah.
So the intent of limited business to be residential in kind of business, is that the intent? What's the intent of limited business versus business?
Well, initially it was that it be an area that you had to go through a, in business, certain things are as of right.
Yeah.
You know, our list of things in our bylaws, you can do any of these things in a business zone. In a limited business zone, you can only do it if you go through a special permit process, so it's a more rigorous review. And I guess maybe the logic was that it's closer to residential, but I think in reality, we've kind of moved towards everything should go through rigorous review anyway. So we don't allow a whole lot as of right. We allow, you know, offices and pretty simple things.
One advantage of waiting is that we can see what kind of things, what do these things look like when they're built? I came away with the impression when these guys, a few months ago, when they were coming here to present their growing facility, and they talked about all the security risks because of the cash and the multi-millions of dollars of product that go on hand.
It's kind of horrendous.
I had some picture of high barbed wire with lighting. It would look like a Concorde State prison and...
How would that go against the bright skies bylaw?
And if that's the case, if that's what we get, if that's what's being built, then that might, we can see that that's what's happening and it might change our view of...
I guess I'm getting a little confused, because Framingham, I live in Framingham, and no way comparing Framingham to Bolton, but to me, they look like a retail store. You go by, like, you wouldn't even, unless you read the sign, you wouldn't even know.
This was more of a growing facility, maybe it would be less of a security risk for a...
I mean, they're talking about their workers not being able to have pockets because of that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the growth facilities would look something like a Verizon, there's Verizon buildings that are in every town. You know, it's just kind of windowless and generic cinder block.
Yes, because it's, right now it has to be indoors. There is a possibility that that could change, and then it would look exactly like what James just described.
I would think there would have a lot more security on the retail side, because cash is much easier to dispose of than pails of products. Yeah, that was a primitive...
Well, the other, the other argument would be that we'd be able to see more of the bylaws that are proposed by other towns, and what is approved and isn't approved by the Attorney General, to get a better sense of what's gonna really fly. Because I agree, we don't really know. And, you know, are people gonna take the route of looking at, you know, retail and grow differently? And how does that work? So the one thing we could do is just propose to extend the moratorium to the end of the year.
Be forcing a special town meeting.
No.
If we did it, well, if we wanted to do it before it was over.
But who's gonna take on the task? We have Doug here for two more months.
Dave is excited.
Okay, so, yeah, so you'll finish, you'll pass the football to you and you'll finish it.
And, you know, I'd be happy to be involved and, you know, happy about if there was some way I could do it.
Just like I said, leaving the board affords you two extra nights a month off, that's it. We're still calling you.
Well, that was a threat. The other argument too, Doug, is by December 31st, 2014, probably legal, so this will be...
That's true, because I, and I think that's a good point.
There is some truth.
I think a lot of people are just thinking about this in the current law, which is a medical facility. And I do think that the long run plan, just like in Colorado and California is...
And in Uruguay.
And for Maine, that it's gonna be, you know, legal.
Behind the counter on a legal store.
And you might approach it, you would approach it differently if it was, then it becomes probably, you know, a more, more of an issue about traffic and, you know, volume of visits than it is about how they grow.
I do hope that at least they make it so you can use your credit card and we don't have all these piles of cash. This looks like a disaster.
Well, if the FDA would just approve it, then it'll be sold in CVS tomorrow.
Absolutely, and that's how it happens, that's how I see it.
Then it might, the all this might go away.
It's not Congress, it's just the FDA.
Yes, well, the federal government, Federal Drug Administration, it's against the law, which is why it's a cash business, which is why states are doing it separately, which is why it's, why it's own entity.
The federal government leans on the banks and credit card companies not to allow them to do business with these sort of organizations, so you can't, Visa won't accept them as a merchant.
I like the line about pharmacies selling oxycontin. I mean, you know, we can buy narcotics, but we can't buy marijuana.
Not everybody agreed with him when he said that.
Well, there's something to it.
No, there is, there is.
But I think it would be very much more widespread. And it's not, you can't buy that without a prescription.
True.
Well, I'm okay with that.
I mean, would it be possible, unless there was something very minor, it doesn't sound like there's enough time to get something together in a month, I don't know.
Well, we can get something together, but we're kind of just flying by the seat of our pants and doing what, you know, has come up and what other towns have talked about. And the thing that we don't have, that other towns have done and been more comfortable with, is a clear place where they say, "This is where we'll want to do it." We don't have that in Bolton.
I mean, you could just say industrial.
But say you send something to town meeting for spring and it doesn't pass, then... Then what happens?
I think anything we send will pass because people will want it. And I think they might, but there might be...
I think they're all gonna be like, "James," or like, "All of us have changed, like, our view on this," so it's gonna be like...
Well, yeah, because everybody was, well, everybody's against it. So then one of the moratoriums saying, "Oh, well, work on law," but nobody really wants it, you know.
I think what you might end up with is a very long, long floor debate with lots of amendments with, "Well, I don't want it just to be here, I want to say it's over here," and, you know...
Make it simple and zoned out.
I think if we did want to do something, a safe route would be to say business and industrial, based on that map. And then it gets rid of the business near the school, but you end up with the cane property and the industrial near Paragon.
But then you get the residents who live adjacent there too, standing up saying, "You're essentially a spot zone, you're not a spot zone."
Well, but that's what people are doing, business, limited business.
But we don't need to do that.
Well, we want to limit throughout the area. It sounds like if we don't do anything, it could be anywhere besides around the school.
See, I'd be more inclined, if I was to do one thing, would be to make a list of the, all the areas in Bolton that we'd want to be sure were included in the 500-foot setback. You know, which, like golf courses and playgrounds and churches.
So the main thing in this area is Bolton Woods Way, right? That would be, could you, could you say, like the north side of...
Well, you don't have to, well...
It's residential.
No, but residential is not in the state law, we have to do that.
So if you said limited business and a 500-foot setback around residential, you would end up with this area right here?
In industrial.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you said industrial and 500-foot setback around...
But what we don't know is, is that gonna be seen as too restrictive? I mean, I don't know, if we start putting too many constraints on us, that's... That's another advantage for waiting, is that maybe we can, we can make it restrictive.
Well, I mean, based on your email, I saw like, you know, like Concord was saying, just in this one, the medical area or whatever.
And the Attorney General could kick it out.
Okay, so that's not approved, Jim.
No, 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 Concord approved.
The AG said that was fine.
The AG did say it was fine.
They, the whole theme of the meeting was, "Sit back and think about what you want for your town." What, I didn't write all this in the email, but what is appropriate for your town? What do you want to get out of your town? What are the, what do you value within your town? And then strategize around that. Say, "If growing is more palatable for us, how do we structure a bylaw that promotes the growth segment?" And you structure it by saying, "It's near large parcels, it's near existing agricultural uses, it's far from the business by default."
But can you restrict dispensary?
No.
You can't.
You can't, no, you cannot, Doug's right, you can't say, "I won't allow..."
So a dispensary could end up in the same exact spot.
Indirectly, you certainly can. Towns are doing it and they're getting approval from the AG.
I think we could tweak maybe the residential setback. You know, not the 4, 500 feet, but tweak it so we come up with two locations, so it'd be Paragon and the cane property. Is that, what does everyone really think of that?
I mean, that's really the only place that I think is palatable to have it, personally.
I mean, at least, people who'd be affected by that are pretty minimal, right? I mean, Paragon, I don't know that any of them...
See, I think Skinner property would be okay.
If that's limited business, I mean, you maybe have to...
I mean, I mean, it's like, yeah, that's a possibility. So tweaking so we get two to three spots in business and limited business and industrial.
But there will be, if you do that...
Yes, there will be.
The people who live near there would be the ones...
We already heard that.
Come and make us think and, you know...
But I don't know how you avoid that.
At least, probably so.
This is not easy.
No.
Thank you, David Lindsay.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking.
We could do it at the same time.
Tell us where you want it.
At the same time, and just say it's the same place.
So just on the last...
Let me, let me, is it even not all right? I mean, it's gonna...
Why not?
If it doesn't pass, I mean, that'll give us a lot of ammunition for an extension along this.
So the simplest thing we could propose would be to say, "You have to go through special permitting process," which I think is a no-brainer to say that. And it's restricted to industrial and areas that, what did we say, business?
Yeah.
Industrial and business zones.
And that, which is...
And the 500-foot setback.
So it's gonna be 200 or 500, we'd have to...
Yeah.
But that would kind of put it near Paragon or...
Yeah, I mean, that would limit it to a couple places, the cane property.
On 117. You know, we have east of, east of 495, that'd be great.
No, it's just, it's just like it has half the traffic. No, yeah, we would... Down that section of town over by the...
What side, what side of town do you want it to be? What's the west side?
I'm on the busy side, I'm the 3,000 cars a day.
He's near a library.
Children hang out there. Well, that's true. It could be right across Manor Road, or right up there on that hill, between Manor and Old Bay.
Right next to that beautiful house that was just built 500 years ago.
Okay, it cost a lot, I think, that was good. Yeah, we shut it down, right?
So what's the consensus?
Doug's gonna complete, he's gonna come up with something.
I'll water it down to what we just discussed and we can talk about that at the next meeting and see if we want to do it.
There you go.
Or, or if not, and I mean, I'm not a huge moratorium guy, but I would suggest, based on what happened at the last town meeting, that if we don't go forward with a bylaw, we go forward with an extension of the moratorium to the end of the year, alternatively.
So there are two other things, review building applications.
I think it's two small other things, here's the application to review.
Jonathan, just keep pushing on the village overlay district. That's gonna be written by that group, right? We don't write it, or do we approve? It has to go through us, or...
Yeah. Coming back.
Are you going forward with it?
Yeah, we just have that one last piece of meeting with all the owners.
So you're gonna do that? Yep. Could you forward the meeting minutes from their meeting to us?
Sure.
Just because when I was on it, I was, you know, getting the minutes, so it'd be interesting just to get the minutes.
No, yeah, no, we had a good meeting last meeting, it's just...
Sorry, I missed it.
You know, we voted on the three parcels to include them.
So cane, Bolton Office Park and Freedus?
Freedus and...
And...
Pulpit Corners.
We voted to include those. So it's now it's...
Residential rechandatory?
It's not mandatory, it's a choice.
Oh, really?
They can just stay as they are. No, if you choose the overlay, you have to do residential.
Okay, I was gonna say...
But you don't have to choose the overlay.
Okay, yeah.
Does the percentage go up, at TBD?
I think we're sticking with the 10%.
How would that work then, with residential? Based on the drawings we are getting, how would that work? Like the proposed grouping of houses, I mean, how's that even possible?
Yeah, I mean, when, when they did the, you know, we saw those drawings of the cane property, that was still under 10%.
Okay.
So they couldn't even, with the wetlands and the set of houses and everything else, they couldn't even get 10% in there. So that's, you know, that's in there as an incentive, but it's just not turning out to be...
Yeah, cool.
That's just kind of an FYI, remember the Sugar Road?
Yeah, they've been banging that house up.
Uh, Firematic put in that new driveway and didn't apply for a driveway.
Yeah.
So he has paid the fee and submitted the application and everything. Harold has looked at it, it meets the bylaws, so we're good. So that was just an FYI to you for it.
Okay, great.
So do you want to put all the rest of the bylaws onto your next meeting and not discuss them tonight?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and then just, there's meeting minutes from the last meeting that need to be approved.
And the other two meetings too.
No, I thought, I thought they were approved.
Nope, those have not been approved.
I'm gonna start, John.
So this is from September 25th and October 9th. Thanks.
Am I supposed to sign this until I'm really at those meetings?
Nope.
You're gonna be there. You gotta be there for them.
This is a good one.
I know. I hope she doesn't run screen out again tomorrow.
I know.
Be really stern with you guys.
I start work.
I'm boss, it'll be fine.
No problem.
Oh, why so early?
I don't have shit to do. Late, not all.
But do you deal with people out of the time zone a lot of the time?
No, I just get ready to get yelled at at nine o'clock.
Takes you four and a half hours to get ready to do this?
Usually does.
Do it on the front? I think the minutes got a lot longer. We were without a planner.
I tried to pick the ones I did down to a minimum.
I think it's because it's all bullet points rather than a narrative, so you have all that white space on the right side of the page. We have videos now, right? Why do we need minutes?
We still do.
We do?
Yes.
In case somebody doesn't have.
They're permanent records, yeah. It's part of the public record.
Same reason why they still print newspapers. I'll ask Larry.
This is hard for the.
And our house to show the full property on there, I think it does. I've never seen one like that, but. And then.
No, it's good.
I got up and filled this glass with work.
That's really good.
Asked you to take minutes. Did we send anything to Chuck Black saying that he does owe that 4,000?
Wow, I already approved those.
What I did, yeah, I sent him the modification to the special permit for the sidewalks. And I specifically told him in it that it says that once the applicant applies for street acceptance, that he owes the $4,000. I said, so when you come before the board, I can't speak for the board, but I'm thinking they're probably gonna ask you for the $4,000.
Okay, good.
He's not here tonight though, so.
Thank you.
He did cancel for tonight.
There was one other item that came up, we had that, we had that preliminary design meeting with Bolton Office Park about the assisted living facilities. And we brought up the issue about the access to town land and.
That it was approved.
Ken Tru. Um, remember that there was. That access has to remain. They can, that's in the conditions, the access.
Special permit conditions for the operation of common land building?
When they first developed.
Really?
That site.
Okay.
Access to town property has to, you know, remain open.
Funny they don't remember that.
Yeah, they can move it a little bit. But, so those two trails, the one that goes to the school and then one that goes back to the, it's at the horse spring, it's called.
Okay.
The gardens, public gardens.
Yeah, now it's the public gardens and I think that's a lacrosse field.
Yeah.
And there's also, you know, the public has access to the pond back there for fishing, so many.
Really?
Square feet for public use, so there are a lot of uses as part of the conditions for that.
And when was this discussed, at a selectman's meeting?
They came to us and we, we discussed it. You know, they presented that assisted living and it was kind of blocking.
Came to who?
Bolton Office Park came to us as a preliminary.
Well, I remember when they came, they planned.
Oh, we say, when was it discussed that?
When did you find out this stuff from Ken Tru and stuff?
Oh, I mentioned it to one of the gardeners, I think they mentioned it to Ken and he, he remembered something in, in the show.
Okay, I, I thought you were saying there was another meeting that it was discussed.
Yeah, it was kind of a roundabout way, so it was looked up. I will forward, forward that to you though.
Yeah, Linda found that.
Yeah.
Good records.
Once you guys have, scientists don't forget, you need to vote on your minutes.
Need to what?
Vote to approve your minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the three minutes that were reviewed tonight. David, 9:25, 10:09, and 11:13, 2013?
Say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?